And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, to begin our meeting, or reconvene our meeting, first section would be reports from city officers, which would be report from the mayor. I truly have nothing prepared to say, but the one thing I do want to mention very quickly is to thank the Public Works Department, Mike Thomas, and all involved for reacting to two very large snowstorms that the city has experienced, plus the wave of cold air. And I'd like to thank all the city workers for seemingly 24-hour service. That said, we're going to go next to what would be an appointment by the mayor, and this would be asking for a motion to confirm the appointment of Vanessa Nolan, and that would be as a member of the Croya Board.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And motion carries. Next section for council would be comments by city manager, Bob.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Novit, members of the council. Before I get into the item on the agenda, I did want to ask our Director of Public Works, Michael Thomas, to come forward, talk about two subjects. One, snow plowing operations, and second, what's happening this week with respect to sanitation pickup, because I'm sure, like you, I think my wife's talked to Michael more today than she has to me with all the phone calls he's sent out, but we wanted to make sure that the public was aware of when pickups were going to occur because of the severe weather. So, Mike?
Thank you. Good evening, Acting Mayor, members of the city council. This evening's staff would like to present to you a summary of our December snow operations, and as Bob said, a review of our sanitation collection for this week. I've put in front of you, and on the screen as well, is a summary of December's snow events. This is up to and including the evening of the 31st. If you remember, the snowstorm that we had went on to the 1st of January. Those numbers are not included. We cut this off on the 31st. This month has been, as we all know, very heavy, and a lot of time and manpower has been used. But the calendar shows you color-coded the number of plowing and salting events. We've had 10 plowing events, six salting events. We've hauled from what we refer to as the CBD uptown three times, and we've plowed sidewalks five times. Again, that's simply the month of December. Our overtime hours, and this again is for the entire operation, it is not just plowing and hauling, it is the two train station cleanups, it's all the city buildings, it's sidewalks, it's West Park Ice Pond. We've used a total of 728 overtime hours during the month of December. Salt is on the mines, is on our mines. We come to you typically in March to ask for your approval to purchase salt for the following winter. We did so, and we went into the winter season with our two cupboards full. We had 1,600 tons on hand. We are now, and we've ordered 800 since, we are going to be, actually, we placed our order for our remaining 1,200 tons last week. We called them today, they told us we'll receive a confirmation this Wednesday or Thursday as to when trucks will begin to start coming down from Milwaukee and delivering us the salt. The bottom line, as we sit right now, we have about 200 to 300 tons on hand. We'll be receiving our final 1,200 tons. The contract allows us to go up 20%, so we can add another 240 tons at the price, but if need be, we may, at some point, come back to you, depending upon how the month progresses, and ask approval to purchase additional salt. Right now, things are okay, and we're holding steady. The challenge is going to be simply waiting in line, as we all do, all the communities, park districts, counties, townships, we all get salt from the same vendor, so it's finding the trucking firms to get the material delivered to us. The next slide simply reviews the two large events we had, December 31st into the first. There was a 15-inch snowstorm, and this weekend was an 8-inch. As we progress through this week, we're going to continue to remove snow from all our various parking lots. We'll continue with the CBD cleanup. We did one last night. We've got to do some more extensive to get all the parking stalls cleaned. We began sidewalk plowing today. We're having a difficult time getting through compared to the storm we had last time. We were able to get on the mains today, but there's a lot more we need to get done on sidewalks. This evening, in the overnight hours, we're going to begin our bench plowing, which simply is, our snowplows are 42 inches tall. When we push snow, and if that snowbank on the side of the road gets to be 42 inches tall, which it is, snow falls back into the street. The only way to solve that is we take a plow, and we basically extend it into your front yard, it's called benching, and we push that snow further back, which will give us space to put the next snowstorm's snow up onto the curb. So, we will begin benching the whole town. It's probably going to take at least the rest of the week, if not into next week. As Bob mentioned, sanitation refuse schedule, we are back online. We were contacted yesterday by Advanced Disposal, Veolia, and Zion, where we bring our material to the landfill. They were closed today. They contacted us today and said that they will be open tomorrow. So, we will get everything that we were supposed to pick up today, we'll pick it up tomorrow. Tuesday's collection will happen on Wednesday, and then we'll be back Thursday, Friday. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How's your new snow blower working?
Great.[408.21][408.21](Laughter). Bob doesn't want me to do this. I'd love to bring some videos for you guys, but Bob thinks I'd put you to sleep.
Did you say it's 285?
Some really cool stuff. I'm sorry?
285.
I believe it is. I think it's a little bit, it's 275, 275 cap. It works great.
If anyone's interested in seeing it, I'll be more than happy to call you at midnight when they're out there using it. Mike gets so excited about it.
A remarkable piece of equipment.
It speeds things up immensely. We drag everything into the middle of the street, Deer Path, Western, Westminster, and just go down the middle, and it loads trucks. The saving grace, not only is a snow blower, but having Old MS. If you do have an opportunity, I'd recommend, highly recommend, driving over to Old MS, and you will see a significant amount of snow, and that is all from here, from uptown and all the parking lots. So, it's that turnaround time, it's our ability to load the trucks, get up to Old MS, dump, come back, that really allows us to get uptown cleaned, so.
Can you explain the sidewalk plowing program to me? What sidewalks are plowed, when are they plowed? And any other details that are appropriate?
Our policy says that we will plow sidewalks once snow has accumulated to four inches. We, at times, will sneak and go sooner, we'll hit it at two or three, but once the snow hits four, we'll go ahead and start plowing sidewalks. We will not plow them during a snow event. We will wait until the end, because it falls lower on the priorities. We need to get the streets done, the parking lots done, and then we'll fall into the sidewalks. But it's the same group of guys, so we simply say, okay, the streets are done, the parking lots are done. The same guy that was plowing your street may very well hop into a sidewalk plow and start knocking out the sidewalks. We try to focus close to the schools at first, and work our way out, except today, we started on the mains, and we had a tough time getting through those. But it's simply to remove the snow once we accumulate four inches, and we do all public sidewalks.
Any idea what that costs per year?
No, but I could find out for you. We have a spreadsheet that we work on throughout the winter months. Actually have a fine, detailed copy for it here. But it simply lays out for us, and Donna Dunn and Dan Martin put this together with Lou Decker, every single man hour of every operation we do in the winter. So we, whether it's a seasonal employee, full-time employee, straight time, overtime, whether they're plowing streets, sidewalks, information that's important to myself and Dan, as we manage the program, we'll be able to break that out very easily for you and tell you, here's the number of times we plow sidewalks, here's the number of straight hours, overtime hours, here's the cost.
Do you know, do we use overtime hours to plow sidewalks?
Sometimes we do. A majority of the time, we try to go straight time. So, if we have a snowstorm on a Wednesday, we will work on sidewalks Thursday and Friday. If we have a snowstorm on Friday, and we know that it's going to freeze down and cause us problems, that's when we'll go ahead and do overtime. But otherwise, we try to do sidewalks on straight time.
And, Mike, just a quick question. As far as salt and supply for March, or hopefully not April, were covered as far as the remainder of the winter season?
Well, we are covered from the standpoint that we have called in for our remaining 1,200 tons, and we can order an additional 240 per our contract. How far that will take us, God only knows. We hope it will take us through the rest of the winter. But as this winter progresses, and as we go through January and into February, if we really begin to see our usage going up, and therefore the salt days going down, we'll come back to you to ask for approval to purchase additional salt.
Yeah, just thinking a few years back, when the price for the commodity was pretty volatile, and was going upward, you know, just avoiding, again, getting gouged on salt prices.
Correct. You are correct, and that's, again, one of the, we were able, and that was, I believe, back in 2007, there was a shortage of salt, and we actually had salt trucked in from New Jersey, of all places, because the East Coast is having a much lighter winter, and they had the salt, the Midwest didn't. But that's something, again, we can look and take a look at. Again, Old MS has got a capacity to hold 600 tons. We don't have anything in there now, but that's a possibility as well.
Yeah, especially with the storage, just avoid.
Well, and the demand as well. We're all asked to submit our requests in the springtime, and that's how much is mined out of the salt mines, and from Kansas, and brought up here to Calumet City in Milwaukee, and once it's gone, it's gone, so.
Okay. Hopefully get some sleep. Now, thanks. Any other questions? And, Bob, any other comments?
Just one.
Thanks. I gotta stall for a few minutes while Kathy gets this up. Which way? Okay, I'll give you all the answers. Well, let me put that down there, and then you can. This time of the year, first meeting of the year, the council knows that staff comes forward with its recommendations for the community and priority goals for the city of Lake Forest, so I just wanted to spend a few minutes going over these, explaining, you know, there's hundreds and hundreds of projects that staff works on through the course of the year, but we wanted to identify those that we felt were of critical importance, that we wanted to make sure that we were in alignment with the city council and the community as we went forward. The first item up there is purposeful community engagement. As a follow-up to 2013, where the city of Lake Forest held eight community engagement forums at Gordon Community Center, and I know some of the aldermen wish that probably the attendance had been greater than it was, but the feedback we got from the participants and the people who attended was extremely positive, and the staff felt that it was a very good first step in continuing to engage the community in more local government matters. Unfortunately, more times than not, we see that residents only come here when there's a petition before one of our boards and commissions, and this is an effort to reach out to them sooner or earlier in the process, and get them engaged in some of these conversations that go on in the city. The council knows that the city engages in a number of methods to communicate and inform the public, including ward meetings, town hall meetings, the web, the dialogue, and so forth, but this was an attempt to reach those people that normally don't come to these chambers and participate. And we will continue that in 2014. But in 2014, rather than having a monthly topic, we felt that we were going to be a little more focused, and a little more, or looking at some specific projects, or specific topics and issues that we felt were very timely. The first one relates to the strategic issue of environmental stewardship. And taking two topics that were talked about in 2013, I think Alderman Tack had one on ravines, and Alderman Edelman had one on native plantings, and following up further on both of those, because of the work that's going on at Forest Park, it's going to be extremely timely, and almost an extension of the work that's going on in Forest Park, because the Lake Forest Collaborative for Environmental Leadership received a grant to do some work in the ravine just south of Forest Park, the Seminary Ravine, and that work will be taking place in 2014, and it will be a great opportunity for us to educate the community on the importance of ravine, and how do you preserve and maintain ravines, and at the same time, though, working on the whole subject of native plantings, because with the re-greening efforts that are going to be going on in Lake Forest over the next couple of years, we want to make sure that we try and educate our community as to how to replant and re-green Lake Forest with more native plants, more native shrubs, more native trees, that require less maintenance and less water, and you heard earlier this evening about the efforts for water conservation, and that's going to be an area that we'll be focused on. The second strategic issue has to do with the whole issue of community character, and specifically, the issue of diversity of housing. And again, this is very timely because of the conversations with Laurel Avenue, and I'll be talking here in a moment more about Laurel Avenue, but engaging the community on really looking at what types of housing do we lack in our community, and how do we utilize the Laurel Avenue redevelopment to leverage that, to achieve those needs that we have there. The second item there has to do with leveraging service delivery collaborations, and the council knows that for certainly the last five to 10 years, the city has been actively involved in partnerships, either with other municipalities or other organizations, and that will continue through 2014 and beyond. We have a couple of issues coming before the city council relatively soon. At your January 21st meeting, there will be a resolution to continue the conversation discussion about central dispatching. Also, we will be continuing to support the work of the Shared Fire Service Task Force, as well as the Task Force on Parks and Recreation with the Lake Bluff Park District that's underway. Staff is also in the midst of four studies right now, having to do with further collaborations and partnerships. One having to do with the IT services, another having to do with inspectional services, another having to do with cable TV, and a fourth having to do with fleet services. So we're hoping that through the course of 2014, we will be bringing back to the council formal recommendations with respect to those four initiatives as well. Speaking of the Laurel Avenue site, obviously, this is a critical parcel for the city of Lake Forest, both for how it's going to impact our community character, but also under fiscal stewardship, because it will have such major fiscal impacts on our community, both through the sale of the property, but also through its impact on our central business district, and shopping, and economic vitality, and so forth. We are very pleased to say that we had 11 responses to our request for qualifications, and staff and the consultant right now are trying to narrow down those 11 to a manageable number that we can bring back to the Property and Public Land Committee to do its first round of interviews, but this is going to be a project that I think is going to have a lot of attention in the community throughout the course of 2014. And I know that the PPL committee and the city staff are working diligently to make sure that we're balancing both what I'll call the market forces, what will people buy, with what do we want, and what do we need, and what do we believe fits into our community and its community character. The final item that's up there has been there for four years, and you'll probably see it for many more years on financial acumen, because this is such an important issue facing our community, to make sure that we maintain the very strong financial condition that we're in, and that only occurs through thoughtful, long-range planning, and I think the council experienced that recently, going through the budget discussions and discussions about fees and charges, because the decisions that we're making today really are influencing our financial condition three, five years down the road. So that will be a consideration that we'll continue to work on. With respect to some of our priority goals, the strategic plan implementation will continue. We've accomplished an awful lot in the first nine to 12 months, and we will be bringing to you a formal update as a part of the March budget meeting, but these are things that the staff is working on, and will continue to work on and implement at the direction of the city council and the community through the adoption of the strategic plan. Hospital expansion, I think you're all familiar and up to date on that. It has received approvals from the Plan Commission, and the report and recommendation from the Plan Commission will be coming before the city council at your January 21st meeting. Enhancement of community assets, this is also something I know the council has been working on, because even though we see a diminishment in resources coming out of Springfield and Washington, that we still need to continue to invest in our infrastructure and in our assets. A couple of very notable projects that will hopefully be completed in 2014. One would be Forest Park, which is well on its way. Phase one is complete, and as soon as the weather breaks, we'll begin phase two, and hope to have that done by early June of this year. Second one, which is going to be very visible, and knock on wood, we're hoping that here in the next 30 days, we're going to bring back good news to the city council, is the restoration, final work on the Central Business District train station and the bike path adjacent to the train station. We've gotten preliminary indications that we might be getting some grant money to work on the bike path, and so we're very excited about that, but the painting and the exterior work is scheduled to begin as soon as weather permits, and then the path work will begin, hopefully, once the grant funds are received. We also have the, certainly, the Emerald Ash Bore, both removal of infested trees, as well as the replanting of trees, and I think picking up on some of the comments that were made by the aldermen during the budget meetings, looking more thoughtfully at where we're replanting, and when we replant, and how we replant, and not just jumping back and throwing up a tree simply because we took one down. And then finally, a project we've been working closely with Lake County on, and our county board representative, Mike Rumel, and that's on the installation of the bike bridge over the Middle Fork, and tying in east and west Lake Forest, if you will, and being able to connect bikes that are west of the railroad tracks, adjacent to the academy, with the Middle Fork, and then downtown Lake Forest. And we're very excited about that project, because that would also include bike paths that would take you out through Matawa, and connect to other forest preserve trails that are in place right now. The final one is create a place to be, and this really comes back to, I think, one of the underlying themes of the whole strategic plan, and that's the fact that, first and foremost, the city of Lake Forest is a residential community. And if you go back and you look on our website, and the four cornerstones that we feel really has developed and created the community that we have in place here today, that we need to constantly be vigilant, looking at ways to enhance Lake Forest as a place to be. I don't know about the other members of the council, but I certainly get great pleasure when someone says, oh, I'm a fairly, I'm a newcomer to Lake Forest, I've only been here 20 years, or when you see young people who grew up in town, moving back into town, and raising a family here. It tells you that this is a wonderful place to be, and we want to, as we look at decisions, as we look at different undertakings, whether they're infrastructure undertaking enhancements, whatever the case might be, that we're constantly making sure that this is a very pleasant place for people to want to live and raise a family and be. So those are the things that we're going to be focusing on in the course of '14, in addition to the 10,000 other things that come up in the course of the year, but these are really the high priorities that we wanted you to know, that these are things that we're going to be focused on and working through. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have with respect to any of these, but it looks like it's going to be another good year, and certainly, '13 ended with a bang, with the acquisition of Market Square, and acquisition of the Deer Path Inns. A lot of good things happened in Lake Forest in the fourth quarter of 2013, and we think that that momentum is going to continue into 2014 as well. So with that, that completes my report. Thank you.
One quick question. Last year on the community forums, the one that I got was kind of delivered to me, and I enjoyed it, and we did it, I think we did a nice job on it, but we had mentioned last year, and I was hoping to have the opportunity to be, to have some impact on which one that I might do this year. Is that, or any one of us?
Absolutely, and...
Picking them, or do we get to?
No, and I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you, because certainly with the two that we've identified, we would invite anybody who wants to participate on those can certainly do so. I think yours fits in very well with the whole diversity of housing, and I know that's before the Plan Commission. I don't know where they stand, Kathy, in their review of it, but that's going to be coming back very shortly. And I would also say, too, that that doesn't mean that we shouldn't do other topics. I think what we wanted to make sure, and I think what we heard from a couple of you, is to make sure that if we're going to do these, that it's really timely, and there's a identified need and interest within the community. So I would encourage you, if you're interested on those two, let me know, or if you have some other thoughts, to let us know as well.
Okay. Any other comments? Bob, thank you for your thoughts, and 2014 does look like it's going to be a lot more positive than the past few years. Next section of the meeting would be comments by council members. Are there any comments on non-agenda items by council members? There being none. We're going to go to the section, then, for opportunity for citizens to address city council on non-agenda items. There being no indication that there is any wish to address council. We're going to go to the next section of the meeting, which would be Section 5, which would be items for omnibus vote consideration, and following in the tradition of how Mayor Schoenheider has handled this, let me read off the items before we vote. If anyone has any comment on the items, please mention it, so we could pull that item for comment. The items on the omnibus vote consideration agenda are approval of the December 2nd, 2013 city council meeting minutes, approval of the check register, ratification of the naming rights pursuant to the Gordon Restated Agreement. Fourth would be request for city council to waive the bidding process to purchase replacement water plant membrane filters. And then the last item on the omnibus vote agenda would be consideration of an ordinance, approving a recommendation from the building review board. And again, I'm going to ask if there's any comment on these, or any wish to pull any of those items from for discussion. There being no comment, do we have a motion for approval of the five omnibus items as presented?
Let's go move.
Second.
And could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldak.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panaleon.
Aye.
Alderman Tack.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye, with one point of clarification. Item five says, if so desired, final reading.
Oh, excuse me, first reading, then, if desired by city council, first approval.
I have no problem with first and final.
Six, yea, zero, nay, motion carries.
Thank you. We're going to go to the next section, which would be consideration of ordinances. There are none listed. New business, unless there's mention from anyone of new business, we'll go to next item, which would be additional items for council discussion. There being none, I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And meeting adjourned.
I just want to make clarification with Alderman Edelman's comments, that item only received first reading, and it will be back on your agenda on January, yeah, January 21st, because...
Weren't we supposed to? I thought that Alderman Edelman was okay with first and final.
I was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the motion, just for clarification, the motion for the...
First and final.
Or the omnibus agenda was first and final for that fifth item.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's what he...
Adjourned.
We started to pledge allegiance again.